Okay, good evening. I want to welcome everyone to our Select Board meeting. It is Tuesday, November 22, 2022. The hour is 7:00 PM. And as is our custom, I invite everyone in the room to please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Mackey, would you lead us?
I want to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have three scheduled items this evening. The first at 7:00 PM involves a special alcohol beverage license, a one-day license. The applicant name is Broadway Village Foods, Inc. Is there anyone here from that organization?
I can handle it.
Mr. Montori, you want to fill us in on this?
Sure. This is for a one-day beer and wine license for the, for a holiday event at the Senior Center. Broadway Village Foods, Inc., which is Village Inn from Drake, has received one in the past for functions at the Senior Center. So we are seeking this one-day approval for the, just the holiday event at the Senior Center. Everything, all the paperwork's in order.
And the event is on December 2nd from 6:00 to 10:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Do my colleagues have any questions for the town manager? And if not, can I ask for a motion on this?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to pass the one-day liquor license as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Kratman for the minutes and a second by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll make that a unanimous vote. I'm gonna have to wait a couple of minutes. Can we ask you, Mr. Montori, to talk to us about the approval of the home rule petition?
Sure. There is, we had submitted a home rule petition based on a vote from town meeting to change selectmen to select board. And there were changes and amendments made by the Senate that needed the Board of Selectmen's approval. I'm just trying to pull out the home rule petition. Just want to pull it up. So the Board just needs to re, to approve what they made for changes. It was minor, but it still needs the Board's approval before we can send it back.
So it's proposed to be Senate Bill 3128, and it would allow the name change that you referenced from Board of Selectmen to Select Board.
Correct.
There are, what, six sections to the home rule petition, and they all pretty much say exactly the same thing.
They all say the exact same thing.
Any of my colleagues have questions on this matter? And if not, may I ask for a motion to adopt the language and have the town manager resubmit it to the legislature?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Ms. Wellman and a second by Mr. Kelly. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair will vote in the affirmative as well, making that a unanimous vote. Okay. Want to handle town council invoices, Mr. Montori? I'm sorry to make you bounce around, but...
Nope, just gotta pull them out.
If you don't mind.
There are two, there are two town council invoices that I'm recommending for approval. The first is October 1st through October 15th in the amount of $4,462.50, which I would recommend approval.
Okay.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Wellman. Is there a second on that? Second by Mr. Mackey. So this is invoice dated 10/26 for services October 1 through October 15, 2022. The amount is $4,462.50. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair will vote aye as well, so that would be five to zero.
The second is for services rendered October 16 through October 31, 2022, in the amounts of $3,782.50.
Questions on that?
Yeah, Mr. Montori, not that I'm sure he's working on things, but they seem to be almost identical, all the issues. Is it something that's just ongoing on all these matters?
They're, yeah, they're ongoing, they're just, you know, they're reoccurring issues with certain departments.
Okay. No, just like verbatim on different things. And usually when we get these things, it's like for one area or another that you had to come in and talk on this, but this is like, so there must be ongoing for all, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight issues. Okay. No, I just wanted to be clarified that that's it. All right, with that, I, I'll make a motion to approve the town council bill from October 16 through October 31, an amount of $3,782.50.
Thank you.
Second.
So we have a motion made by Mr. Kratman, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Okay, I'm gonna go back up to our 7:05 agenda item, and that is a change in manager and change in hours request for Cracker Barrel Restaurant. And I see two folks here from there, so please join us.
Motion to waive the public reading.
Second.
Yep, they're actually, it's not a public hearing, because this is a change.
Okay.
I believe.
Even better.
So, welcome. Could you do us a favor and just introduce yourselves for the record?
Good evening, I'm Attorney John Meridian, Demokaslaw offices. And with me is Chris Pickert, and call him Kobe, from Cracker Barrel.
Great, good evening.
And we're here tonight seeking two requests on the, right now it's a beer and wine license. We're waiting for ABCC approval on the whole liquor chain, but a change of manager to Chris Pickert here and approval of a request to sell alcohol starting at 10 o'clock on Sundays. Chris will be the manager of record. The former manager Kyle Kim will move back to Ohio, so Chris is now the manager of record. He's worked at Cracker Barrel for about six years now. He's tip certified, his staff's tip certified. We discussed in the past, you know, alcohol safety is of utmost priority. And then the alcohol sales on Sunday, just to allow for a brunch menu item.
Is the only hour change, the 10:00 AM on Sunday?
Sunday, I believe the town has a bylaw on...
That's correct.
11 o'clock rest of the day, just Sunday, 10:00 AM.
Yeah, okay. I was curious about that. All right, do my colleagues have any questions of the applicant or his counsel?
I believe the applicant was in here recently just for the change, and he mentioned how he was gonna be coming in with the change of manager and the slight change for the hours, so I think I've reviewed everything else that's been through recently, so this is the thing, so I have no issues.
Anyone else? No? Okay. Can, we, I'd ask specifically for two, we'll take it in one vote, but if you can incorporate both approvals in your motion on the change of manager and the change in hours, so the record's clear, if someone wants to make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wellman.
I will make a motion that we approve the ABCC application for the change of manager, and we approve the change in requested alcohol sales to Sunday at 10:00 AM, being earliest.
Okay. All right, is there a second on that motion?
Second.
With no further discussion, I ask that all those that are in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will vote in the affirmative as well, so that would be a five-zero vote. Good luck in your new role.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, we have 7:10 PM, so I'm gonna invite our town assessor and finance professional to come to the table. I am gonna read this hearing notice, just so that the residents who are here or watching will fully understand what we're gonna talk about. This is the tax rate classification hearing. So in compliance with Chapter 79 of the Acts of 1983, amending Chapter 797 of the Acts of 1919 and Chapter 40, Section 56 of Massachusetts General Laws, notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be conducted by the Select Board prior to the determination of the following issues. One, allocating the local property tax levy among the five property classes for the next fiscal year and selection of a minimum residential factor. Two, whether to allow residential exemption, and if so, at what percentage of the residential factor. Three, whether to allow a small commercial exemption, and if so, at what percentage? And four, whether to allow a discount of up to 25% for property classified as open space. The above hearing scheduled for Tuesday, November 22, 2022, at 7:10 PM. All citizens are invited to attend and provide written or oral comments on the above listed subjects. Okay, so thank you for your patience on that. So welcome, and just so we can capture that in the minutes, if you could both do me a big favor and introduce yourselves once more.
Sure. Hi, good evening, I'm Jeremy Foley, the chief assessor.
Hi, good evening, I'm Al Rigo, the town accountant.
Welcome.
Excuse me.
All right, so you have a presentation, is it behind me yet? I guess it is. Okay, so you're gonna walk us through this?
I'll do it.
All right, thank you.
I'm just thanking you for having us here tonight, and thanks to my staff, who is fabulous to work with, they do a lot of work behind the scenes that get us here. And thanks to Richard and Al and Treasure Collector and the building department, it takes all of us to get everything ready to get here, so my thanks to everybody. You will notice that probably some of the figures I'll show you will be slightly different from the spreadsheets you had received previously, and that's really mostly due to rounding in Excel, so they're, they're not very big changes. So the purpose of this hearing is to, one, allocating the local property tax levy among the five property classes for the fiscal year 2023 and the selection of the minimum residential factor, whether to allow a residential exemption, whether to allow a small commercial exemption, and whether to allow a discount of up to 25% for property classified as open space. Now, a residential exemption shifts the tax burden from the lower-valued properties to the higher-valued properties and to those owned by non-residents. This exemption is typically seen in communities that can be classified as large cities, communities with an abundance of apartments, and resort communities. In FY22, 16 communities used residential exemption, including Boston, Brookline, Cambridge, Everett-Malden, Nantucket, Somerville, and Waltham. That typically doesn't change from year to year, that, that list has been consistent for many years. Historically, this board has voted no on the residential exemption. A small business exemption lowers the taxes on parcels occupied by small businesses and shifts those taxes to other commercial and industrial taxpayers. In FY2022, 14 communities use this exemption, including Braintree, Seconk, Swambskut, and Rentham. Historically, the board has also voted no on this. An open space discount would allow a discount of up to 25% for property classified as open space. This discount shifts the tax burden to the residential class. We currently have no land classified under open space in Tewksbury. Now, that's not to say we don't have open space in Tewksbury, we most certainly do. This is tax, this is land that would be held by a person or an entity that would receive taxes. Most of ours is held by the town and is exempt from taxes. So historically, the board has not granted a discount for this class. So what is the shift? Shifting the tax rate moves the tax burden to be raised between the residential and open space classes and the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. So where does it all start? It starts with us classifying all the property, and it gets divided into five different classes. You have your residential, your open space, your commercial, your industrial, and your Once all the land is classified, we start with some sales analysis. Last year, we processed 959 deeds. We take those deeds, and then we identify all the arm's-length sales. And an arm's-length sale is a sale between a willing buyer and a willing seller with no unusual circumstances involved in the sale. So during the calendar year of 2021, which is the calendar year we use for setting taxes for FY23, there were 295 single-family home sales that were qualified arm's-length sales. There were 130 condominiums sales and four commercial and industrial sales. We qualify them by sending out sales questionnaires. We have conversations with realtors and brokers and developers. We make a physical visit to each and every property that's sold. We do an MLS review of each property, and we do an aerial review of each property. So from all that data, we take the arm's-length sales and we analyze the market. We make the appropriate market adjustments based on what the sales indicated to us. We then send that sales data to the Department of Revenue, and they review it. They then also review all of the property values and accounts and all property adjustments, including the new growth by DOR. This is just a quick recap of where we looked for fiscal 2022. The shift was selected at a 1.59. Last year, our average single-family home had increased in value by 7.5% and had an average tax bill of $7,434. The average condominium had risen by 5.7% and had an average tax bill of $5,512. The average commercial only had an increase of about 1% in value and had an average tax bill of $23,268. The average industrial property had an, had an increase of 5.7% change in value and an average tax bill of $24,380. So for fiscal year 23, we start out with, what was our levy limit in, our levy in FY22, which is the 88.8 million. We then add the amended growth from fiscal year 22, which is $834,000. We then add the 2.5% increase, which is the 2.2 million, and then we add FY23's new growth, which is another 2.2 million, which gives us a subtotal of 94 million. Then add in debt exclusions, which was 11.5 million, and that gives us the levy limit for FY23 at 100, almost 106. So to calculate what a single tax rate would be if we didn't shift, is you take the estimated living and you divide that by the total assessed values, and that would give you the single tax rate of $16.02. So if we didn't shift anything, both commercial, industrial, residential, everybody would pay the $16.02 tax. So this is a chart looking at our new levy of the 105, 105, 92096. That shows you, the first line shows you what we just talked about, if the single tax rate, so if there was no shift and the CIP was one, the residential tax rate would be $16.02. Commercial tax rate would be the same, and this chart shows you the differences in all of the tax, tax bills. Highlighted in yellow is the 1.59 shift, which was done last year. You would see that the tax rate would change from $14 to $14.30 for residential and $25.47. If that shift was chosen, the average tax bill would increase $476. The average condo would increase $176. The average commercial would increase 20, uh, eight, sorry, would go down, $841. And the average industrial would increase $2,644. The one that's highlighted in the 1.66 that's highlighted in blue is what the town manager is currently recommending. And on the next slide, we'll go into details of, for that selection. So this chart shows the three shifts that are right around what the town manager is recommending, the 1.65 at the top, the 1.66 in the middle, and the 1.67. So you can see that from FY22 to FY23, the average single-family home's value increased by 13.1%. It was a big market, residential homes were selling very high, so they had a big increase. The average residential condominium had a value increase of almost 10%. The average commercial property only increased by 3.1%, and the average industrial increased by 18.6%. But in all honesty, the industrial looks really high because of the new Home Depot that went in. So that sort of skews the industrial average because it was such a large entity. So really, the industrial sort of went along with the commercial 3% or so, maybe a speckle higher than that. So what does that mean tax-wise? So if you're looking at the 1.66 shift, so the average single-family home at 553,132 would see a tax increase of $365. The average residential condo, its value of $397,800, would see an increase of approximately $97. The average commercial, $880,524, would see an average increase of $145. And the average industrial, at just over a million, would see an increase of $3,842. And then the, you know, the chart above just shows the difference that would increase if you went to the 1.65, and the chart on the bottom shows the differences if you went with the 1.67. Not big changes between them, but significant in some areas. And when we talk about averages, there are, you know, the $365, that doesn't apply to every home. There are a lot of homes that are above that average price value of $553,000, so they will see a larger increase beyond the $365 for a tax increase. So I'm just gonna move on to the next slide, which is basically to show you the percentages within the levy that each of the categories carry. So you can see residential's typically across the board, they're around, FY20, it was 74.32, '21, 74.09. Last year, it was 74.4, four almost, and if you go with the 1.6 shift, that would, that would be 74.47. And similar to the commercial, industrial, and personal property, you'll see that the percentages of the levy that they will carry are pretty consistent across the board. This just highlights the fiscal year 2022 shift. So on the left-hand side, you'll see the, the shift that occurred with the 1.59 that was selected, which was 25.56% for the commercial, industrial, and 74.44 for the residential. Had you not shifted in fiscal year 22, the burdens would have shifted a little, and the CIP would have only paid 16.08% of the levy, and the residential would have paid 83.92%. So looking at the town manager's recommended shift for this year, which is a 1.66, your commercial, industrial will carry 25.52% of the levy, and the residential will carry 74.48. Without the shift, if you had a single tax rate and everybody paid, you know, their own individual, then the residential would be 84.62, and the CIP would be 15.38. So you can see the consistency between the selection recommended this year and the selection of last year's. This last slide just shows our levy history, how, you know, between new growth, debt exemptions, and 2.5% increases, the levy is, is, is growing. And then this next chart shows the excess levy capacity. Once we've figured it, you know, allocating everything, $7,732 would be the excess levy capacity for fiscal year 23 with the 1.66 shift. And so the required action from the board is allocating the local property tax levy among the five property classes for the fiscal year 2023 and the selection of a minimum residential factor. The town manager recommends a minimum residential factor of .8801 or a 1.66 shift. And whether to allow a residential exemption, town manager recommends no. Whether to allow a small commercial exemption, town manager recommends no. And whether to allow a discount of up to 25% of property classified as open space, town manager recommends no. And that is the presentation. I know that's a lot of data, so...
Okay. Let me, let me open with a question for you that's very general, but I'm curious if you can offer some comments. What, what observations do you have about the process this year that may be different than historical trend, if you will? Like what, what were the, the things that jumped out in your analysis this year?
Definitely the discrepancy between the rise of values within the residential homes compared to the values within commercials. I mean, I think everybody knows there are, since COVID, there are a lot of companies not heading back to offices. Office space rents are not increasing. They're sort of holding steady right now where we are. We're still seeing residential prices hold their own. I think last year was an incredible jump, 13% is a big jump. And in all honesty, there are a lot of surrounding communities that had higher jumps than us, and they're seeing a little bit more of an impact in the taxes that the residential will carry.
Okay. One other question I have for you before I turn to my colleagues. You mentioned there were 959 deeds that were reviewed or transactions that took place. It looked like about rough numbers, half of those were considered to be arm's-length. Is that unusual in your experience in terms of percentage of the total?
It is not unusual, and part of that reason is as our population grows, our ages, a lot of people get to the age that they're putting it in a trust, and so that deed comes through and we have to process it, and it's not really a change of hands, but it is a change of ownership within that. So we did see more sales, even though prices were up, we still encountered a lot of sales on the market, and I, a lot of that has to do with, there is a very big shortage of housing. And that is not going to end, it is going to continue. You know, it will be interesting to see how that plays out with interest rates rising and how prices will hold or not hold. We are seeing some properties now sort of, I'll say last year, there were a lot of times when people threw a house on the market and just said, "Well, I'm gonna put it up there for this price and see if I get it." And sure enough, some of them got it, you know? We're not seeing that, but we're still seeing houses hold. We're not seeing that, but we're still seeing houses hold value.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just jump in, one of the observations on the, the, this year compared to others, this was the largest increase in residential values that we've seen in over 10 years at 13.1%. And it's the largest gap that, as Joanne mentioned, between commercial and residential that we've ever seen. Prior to that, the largest increase in residential values was 7.9%. And in that same year, we saw the largest gap. And this was in 2019, and the gap between commercial and residential was 6%. So this was a unique year in that sense. And one of the things we tried to do when we reviewed this and bringing forth, bringing forth the recommendation, was keeping everybody at the same percentage that they pay of the levy in our recommendation as they pay now. And if you look at the percentages that were presented tonight by the chief assessor, the residential share of the levy has relatively stayed the same, and so hasn't commercial, industrial, personal property. So that was part of the recommendation. And second, in making the recommendation, when we went to town meeting, the question was asked, what would be the, the impact to the average tax bill? And I remember saying, you know, somewhere around 350, 365, and that's where we're at.
Thank you for that. All right. Let me just turn to my colleagues. This is a public hearing, so we will also ask if residents in the room have any questions or comments. But let me ask my colleagues if they have questions first. Mr. Kelly, you want to start us off?
Sure. You just answered the question about the value change. How about, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but this was some of the conversation last year. We kind of anticipated this last year. You kind of alluded to it, but what, if you, a guesstimate, would, are we looking between a 4% and 8% increase again potentially with the housing market based on, you know, you don't have a crystal ball, but we predicted a lot of this last year as far as the significant increase when considering the shift, knowing that would be in...
So I would say we may not see as big a gap between residential and commercial, but I do think we're going to see probably close to an 8% or so. And it will sort of, I think the gap will sort of depend upon what industrial products, properties do, because commercial is definitely a little stagnant. But industrial seems to be growing. Everybody wants a warehouse. Everybody is looking for the big space to store goods and all of that. So I do think we're probably, my guess is somewhere around 8, but it could be higher or lower in the residential market.
And just to follow up on that, we don't have much commercial or industrial being built in this current year, and everything's, all the values are on the, based on the previous year. So if you look at what's been built in this calendar year, it's mostly residential.
I always say this is one of the more important votes, I think, we take as a board, you know, in lieu of the shift, because it's significant dollars in either direction of residency in a commercial or industrial. Historically, I've always challenged the town manager sometimes in the residents' favor, but I think this go-around here, I think the, the recommendation, again, for me, after doing all the numbers, makes, makes sense, and I'm worried about next year. So we do have a little bit, a little bit of wiggle room. Again, repeating what we said last year, if the housing market does spike, we still have that gap, because taxes are going to continue to, to increase, you know, north of what we're talking tonight, and that's pretty significant. So, so I think that's all the questions I have for now. Thank you.
Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much for your work and the work of your colleagues. I know a lot of, a lot of man-hours, people-hours go into all of this, and also to you, Mr. Montori. Please extend our thanks to them. It's important to acknowledge the good work of our fantastic staff. So thank you. I concur with my colleague that this is one of the more important votes that we take annually. And I appreciate the complete information we have here and also the other detailed information we had from Mr. Montori. I was asking about how we compare with the communities and how we've compared over time. And so we've looked at the last 10 years of, of our shifts and so forth. I think that my chief concern going into this hearing was last week, what would be the impact to our businesses, to our commercial and industrial property? Because I don't want us to be in a position in the future where we're putting too much of a burden on them. And I think that traditionally, this board has done an excellent job with the recommendations of staff to meet the mark very well and balance as best we can to the advantage, which I think is important of our residents, but with a fair advantage. I think the shift of 1.66 is appropriate and hits the mark quite well this year. It's an unprecedented year with such an increase in valuation, which is great because your home is your largest investment. But that always comes with, you know, having to pay that tax bill as well. So I appreciate your work. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too am going to echo Mr. Kelly's sentiment. The concern is always for the future. We, we did talk about this at this time last year, how we knew there was going to be a significant increase last year and this year as we catch up to what the market did. My real concern is for the future. And I know, as Mr. Kelly said, you don't have a crystal ball, but this caps out at 1.75, to my understanding, for the maximum shift. So we're starting to run out of runway. So what, what happens then? I wouldn't have to go there. I know it's a very, very complex answer, and I'm still in the process of educating myself further. But three, four, five years from now, if values don't change significantly, where does that leave us? So...
It's a, it's a great point and a strong consideration for the board to always remember, because if you get to the point where you shift to a 1.75 and you're at your max, and you come into a year like this that your residential properties increase dramatically compared to everybody else, you have no place to turn to give them relief. So I do know there are a few communities in that position this year that they're at their 1.75%, and the tax burden is not the tax burden. They can't shift up or back. And actually, an assessor I had spoken with said that they were really sorry two years ago, they didn't shift back a little and shift back a little, sort of at least last year, knowing that the big increase was coming, that they could have at least alleviated a little with the residential. But that's what will happen.
Just to follow up on that, you know, we did shift back a few years ago. We went back a couple of points back towards commercial when values made sense. And the hope is in the future that, you know, we stay, you know, around the 1.66 regardless of how the values increase in the future. And in fact, two years from now, when there's more of a stabilized property, property values from a residential standpoint, that the board does in the future consider moving back and that we don't creep any closer to the 1.75. Because, you know, we are already shifting a lot on the commercial.
And just in closing, I do appreciate all the work on this, and especially the kind of theory crafting that went into maintaining the percentage shift was very close. So much appreciated. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Just one point to add to Mr. Mackey's comments. I think it's important for the residents to understand, too, we have debt exclusion. We have three, the sewer, the elementary school, and the fire station. So hopefully, you know, we talk about future looking down the road, 12, 36 months down the road, we are going to have a little bit, especially that sewer debt off in three years. So my point is it's something to consider as a board and through these exercises that it's going to give us a little more wiggle room, you know, if we don't have another debt exclusion. But I think that's important to highlight.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, thought that was a great point to bring up. Of this average tax bill, $885 of it is made up of the debt exclusions approved by the residents at the ballot box. And in addition to that, another $83 comes from the CPA fund that was approved by the residents at the ballot. So you're looking at, you know, over $900, close to $1,000 of this average bill is made up of votes that the residents themselves made at the ballot box. So that's a large, that's a large amount of money that most communities don't have in their tax bill.
Mr. Krabman, any comments, questions?
I do. Just concerned. I understand we, we have the shift and we're seeing where we're at. I'm just looking at these numbers, and I'm just trying to figure out a, it's wonderful if you own a home and your value is going up. It's not wonderful if you're a senior and you don't plan on selling that house, and you're going to keep paying these taxes every year. It's, it's wonderful that your home value goes up, but it's, you know, if you plan on staying in your house for the next 30 years, it's like, you don't plan on selling it, this tax goes up year after year after year. It's hot. And it just, I'm just, I'm trying to figure ways of how we can get around this. And, and it's, it's, it's a very troubling thing, because if, you know, we talked about maybe if we did this a couple of years ago. Think about it, a couple of years ago, we had COVID. Kind of hard to shift taxes to commercial when the businesses are closed. So it's not, isn't like we could have done that in the last couple of years. If businesses are closed and nobody's working and everybody's out of it, and everybody's working from home. But I, I, I'm with Mr. Kelly. I challenge us to try to find ways of, of finding to cut our budget of, I understand we got the 2.5. I understand we have to pay our bills. I understand we have schools, we have firemen, we have everything that we need in the services in this. But, you know, what is the increase from what we approved over both town meetings and the average thing to a resident over this year? It's quite extensive. It's just, it's a large tax bill, including with water and sewer, what's coming in. And then, you know, I mean, unprecedented bills with, you know, electric, heat, everything else that's going to be coming this fall. It's just, I'm concerned about how, you know, families are struggling. And I'm just trying to find a way, if there's something we can do to, to shift this any way we can. I don't want to close down businesses, but I also don't want, you know, seniors struggling. I know, now, you looked at the numbers, and you said the average home is like between, you know, 400,000, 500,000. I understand, you know, what a house sold for is and what it was assessed at. I understand that. But like, how many homes are assessed at way over this value of the 400,000 or 500,000? Is it 20%, 30%? It may be, you know, it's 600, 700, 800,000? That this is going to be quite a bit over the, you know, the, the change of, what do I get in average or whatever it is? Yeah, the bill's going to go up. If we go by the recommendation, everyone's tax bill is going to go up $647. So, but that's on a 400,000 or 500,000. Is there, what if you have a 700,000, 800,000 dollar home?
Yep, it's, it's going to increase quite a bit about, it'll increase quite a bit above that. Percentage-wise, what do we have above the 553,000? I'd say maybe about 20% or so of homes. Most of them are probably the newer construction homes, which is probably what's really, which is a main factor in what pulls some of your values to. It's always difficult to look at what's the averages, how does it impact everybody? Because when you're, when you're going and when you're looking at the data, even within it, I can tell you that some of the smaller homes, even within style, like Capes this year, did not increase as dramatically as Colonials did. And part of that is because most of what people build today is the Colonials and their, the new construction always seems to go at a higher rate. But it just seemed like, it just seems that across the board, everything has escalated in value this year. But within, but within certain subcategories, there are people who will see a, a smaller bill than the $365 as well. You know, it just depends upon what type of home, how big it is. We stratify the data 100 different ways, you know? As for relief to seniors and things like that, there are a few programs that we do offer exemptions that if anyone ever has any questions or is looking to see if they qualify, my staff is great at trying to help you point out all that, anything we can do to help you, to get you to fill out those forms. We do, as a town, have some legislation in front of them to make these more available to more people. I believe that's still in the works. So we're doing what we can with respect to that.
Well, I, I mean, I appreciate everyone's work. I'm not saying that, you know, we're not doing what we can. Like I said, it just, I know we're doing everything we can, but it's still concerning. It's just, I'm not expecting you to solve it. I'm just, like I said, I'm looking at these numbers, and I'm just worried about people that are struggling and how they're going to keep paying these bills of what we're doing. I'm, I'm going to go along with the town manager's recommendation, but I just, I think we really have to, I'd love to have a meeting. Each year we go and we do this, and we put together a spring town warrant and a fall town warrant. And knowing that we're going to have this next year, and we're talking about it right now, when we're bringing things to that warrant, I, I'd like to say, hey, listen, we know everyone's property value is going to go up by this. You know, let's, what are we doing for spending this year? Let's, let's, let's stop looking at it very hard, because it just, I know we have to make investments in the community, but it's, it's just like adding this on top is just, it's, I think it's going to, a lot of people are going to see this and be, you know, what just happened? You know, so that's all I have. But thank you so much for your hard work. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Krabman. Let me just add a couple of comments from my point of view. I want to echo what Mr. Kelly started us off with. I think, having sat at this table for a little while, this, this hearing and this decision is one of, if not the, most important decision that we make as a board each year. So with that comment, I want to underscore that. I personally, and I believe my colleagues, past and present, also have put the time and effort and consideration into the decision that's required to be made. And I think this board collectively, again, past and present, has addressed this topic in a fair, reasonable, you know, rational way without taking wild swings. Because the temptation is to go to an extreme. And you already described the implication of doing that is we box ourselves in as a community. And the concern that Mr. Krabman just referenced, while I share it to some level, would be much more concerning if we had no options. So while the decision here affects everyone, if you follow this process and you, you don't rely on the social media headline, you rely on the homework, and you rely on the people that did the work to come to a reasoned decision, then hopefully you have a better understanding of why that particular decision was made. The thing that strikes me and is something that I believe this board has effectively managed over a number of years is the, the issue of consistency and reliability when it comes to this decision. And I think our chief assessor, in her comments, supported that with some evidence, and that's around the split, right? Where we're moving roughly 10% of the commercial value, excuse me, the residential value off of them towards the CIP side of the equation. And that number's been consistent pretty much year over year in the information that you provided to us. And I know if we go back even further, that's a pattern that we see exist. So while residential taxpayers can certainly have that level of concern about the impact, they also need to realize that we're moving 10% over to them, to the other side. And that's no small amount of value when we're talking about 105, is it billion or million? Billion, yeah, in value. So that's real, real responsibility that we're putting on another potty. And I think the board collectively has approached it from a predictable perspective. And I think that's important, because when you look at the bond rating agencies, when you look at whether a business wants to come into town here, when you want to consider people who... when you look at whether a business wants to come into town here, when you want to consider people who wish to buy a home or maybe build a home in Tewksbury, they're gonna look for consistency and reliability in municipal government. And I think what we're potentially doing here tonight is a continuation of that consistency. So it, it isn't fun. The five of us asked for this job and we're the ones at the table. And it's not all citations and speeches. Sometimes there are difficult decisions to be made and this is one of them, probably the most important one to Mr. Kelly's point. So we own it. And I know that we constantly challenge the town manager and his management team to wring out every dollar of savings that we possibly can find. And I also believe that residents have come to appreciate the level of services that this community offers. We, we hear demands and requests for more services. And the only way those things happen is based on property tax, for all intents and purposes. So these are not easy decisions, as has been said. They're not necessarily fun decisions, but they are decisions that must be made. And in the better interest of our community, I think the recommendation that's being made is, is an appropriate one. So similar to the comments made and offered by my colleagues, I find myself in the same neighborhood as far as supporting the recommendation and preserving our opportunity to make adjustments as we go forward in future years. So I'll stop there. I wanna offer anyone in the audience who has a comment on this topic, because it is a public hearing, an opportunity to offer their comments. And if so, I ask you to arise and go to the podium. And if you would just give us your name and address for the record, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening, Vinnie Fratellia, 81 Windsor Drive. I appreciate all the work that you guys do as select board, for the assessing department and, and all the work that the town manager does. But I echo Mr. Krabman's concerns as far as, I'm in that range right now as a, as a retired Tewksbury resident on a fixed income, you know, and that the taxes, as well as our services do go up. But I'm looking at something that maybe at some point that they stay the same or go down or do whatever we have to do for that to happen. You know, we live in a great town and I'll be the first one to admit that, you know, but I do want, I do, I don't wanna leave. My kids are all here, my grandkids are all here, they're in the school departments and, and, and the schools and so forth, and I love living here. But at some point, we all have to realize that we have to stop spending somehow, somewhere so that our tax rates don't come up and go up and go up because it's eventually gonna knock me out of the game and get me to have, have to move. And I don't wanna do that. You know, I don't wanna burden you guys as select board members, but I think as a group, you know, and I voted affirmatively on for the, for the school and for the firehouse. And I knew those taxes were gonna go up. But at some point, I was hoping that maybe they would level off and stop and not continue to go up. Five, six, you know, seven hundred dollars a year is not a lot to a lot of people, but it is to the elderly. And I know it, it is to myself because I'm not working a second job, I'm living on a fixed income. And to be honest with you, you know, I'm a member of the Tewksbury Planning Board. And I voted for a lot of developments in this town for the purpose of raising our tax base and bringing that tax base up so that hopefully we would have a, a level tax rate and not keep going up, up and up and up. That hasn't happened. We've been doing a lot of development in town and you don't see the tax rate coming down at all. I don't know where we'd be now if some of those developments that are, are built now and paying taxes, you know, to this community, where would we be if we didn't have that revenue? Maybe we couldn't spend this and that, but you know, it, I, I don't know the answer. But I do appreciate all the work you guys do, you know, from the select board, from the, from town manager and from the Tewksbury staff. But just as a resident on a fixed income, that's where I'm coming from, you know, but I don't know the answer. But at some point, it's gonna send a lot of people out of town and I, I don't wanna see that. And I don't wanna be a part of that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. One last thought that I wanna at least touch on, and I think we've had this discussion in years past, at least maybe recent years past. But Mr. Fratellia just reminded me of this topic. And that is the subject of we have a lot of large commercial rental properties in town. And I know we've had discussion in the past about the fact that under the current state law, those properties are taxed at the residential rate. And you could argue potentially that those are commercial properties and they should be taxed at the commercial rate. Which I don't know what the implications are precisely, but shifting that would definitely raise revenue and tax revenue from the commercial side. And it might potentially give relief on the residential side. So it's not something that can be determined here locally. I believe we've had conversation with our delegation about it. But if my colleagues are open to that, maybe that would be a topic that we could do a little further research and communicate to our current delegation our interest in having statewide review of that. Obviously would require legislative change, but as they say, has to start with one person.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mackey.
If I may, a question for Ms. Foley. I know we spoke about this exact topic about this time last year and there was something kinda going on, potentially legislative. Do you know anything about any changes or anything that's in the pipe that may impact this topic?
I do know that it had been previously approached, I don't know by whom or how aggressively. But it all comes down to a main definition of how a property is used is how it's taxed, right? So if it's used as residential, then its tax is residential. And with a lot of the large, what you would call, commercial-based homes, a lot of them deal with or have subsidized affordable housing in it. And that holds a very strong hold on the fact that it is treated as residential property. How a property is used and taxed is the basis of taxation. And so I do believe that to modify anything like that would be a very big uphill climb. Maybe not impossible, but an uphill climb.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, I close just based on some comments from Mr. Fratellia. I think it's important to note, because today's, the, the budget was already set at annual town meeting and special town meeting with years' votes on every line item budget. So to Mr. Fratellia's point, you know, how do we, there's only one way to kinda take matters in your own hands. It's go to annual town meeting or special town meeting and say no to budgetary spends. And the other avenue for our community is additional revenue streams. I E. billboards, I E. retail marijuana facilities, which we'll discuss tonight. But for me, it's that simple because we've already got the calls prior, we're gonna get the calls tomorrow about this big tax number. And I had the number already planned, I think it was favorable for the residents this year because typically, you know, in years past, I haven't agreed with the, the assessment. But I just, I think it's that simple. You know, if, if, when taxes get to a certain point, and again, it's not a Tewksbury thing, it's all communities. A challenge with this because of the increase in their homes, the simple matter is, you're right. You're gonna say no to additional spend and that's, that meeting is in eight, in, in May and then subsequently in October. So I think it's important for the residents to understand that, that we're not creating this tonight. We're simply, this is the number of the budget that we have to conform to. I think it's backwards why we do it now and not in, in, you know, earlier in the cycle. But that's neither hand or there, but you bring up some very good points, especially on the seniors with fixed income. You gotta get out there and say no, or we try to get additional revenue streams because we are eighty-five percent residential. It's that easy for, for me. So, but I think that was some good points. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, to your point, I just got one last thing to say, I know we're going on and on about this. But to your point about the residential commercial legislation and filing that, I, I know Tewksbury compared to a lot of cities and towns is a small town. We're growing, we're getting bigger, but I know we're also part of the Middlesex III. So is there a way that, you know, I know we talked to our delegation, but you know, nothing to our delegation, but we get a lot of young representatives that are new up the State House. They don't hold the clout of somebody that owns a chairmanship or things like that. So it's hard for them to pass certain things to get things through. But if we had something where we talked to Johnson, Drake, Lowell, Burlington, Bill Ricker, all the people that are members of the Middlesex III, and saw, see if they were interested in this and when they're having those meetings. You know, have you looked at this as well? And then if we found out we had a consensus of surrounding communities and they signed off on it in a sense to their delegation as well, maybe that would really get the ball rolling to see if that would get something. It just, like I said, anything thinking out of the box, we may get a big fat no, you can't do this. But I'd rather ask the question a hundred times to say you can't than not do anything. So it doesn't hurt to ask, I understand it's maybe an uphill time, but it's, I, I like your thought and I think it's, those are some of the things that we should be doing.
No harm in pursuing that. And I, I was, I think I recall being told that we would be better off with four elected representatives and senators than we were before. So we should have more clout now than ever before. All right, could I ask for a motion to close the public hearing? We have a motion made by Mr. Kelly, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, the public hearing is now closed. So we enter the deliberation phase and I ask if my colleagues, any of you have any recommended course of action in the form of a motion?
I make a motion to approve or adopt the town manager's recommendation of an MFR of 0.8801 factors into 1.66.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Mr. Kelly, seconded by Mr. Mackey. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair will vote aye as well. And then the other three, do you need formal votes on that or silence means negative? No? Okay, so can I ask for a motion on the residential exemption? And understand that the recommendation is in the negative.
I make a motion to vote no, to accept the town manager's recommendation of no.
Is there a second?
Second.
On which one?
Okay, residential exemption. So we have a, a motion made by Mr. Krabman, seconded by Mr. Kelly. All those in favor of no adoption, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. Now, relative to allowing a small commercial exemption, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to the town manager's recommendation of no to a small commercial exemption.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, a motion was made by Mr. Krabman, seconded by Ms. Wellman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well, meaning we are voting in opposition to instituting a small commercial exemption. And the last is the twenty-five percent for property classified as open space. Seeing as we have none, I guess we still need to take the formal motion, but is there a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we do not allow a discount of up to twenty-five percent for property classified as open space.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the recommended negative vote, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well. So that would be unanimous as well. Is there any other action you need from us?
I do not. All set. Thank you very much.
Thank you both for your help with this this evening. Have a good holiday.
Have a wonderful, thanks Stephen.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to residents portion of the meeting. Are there any residents who have any other business other than what we just, sir, if you don't mind, please go to the microphone? And while I know who you are, would you please tell us your name and address for the record?
Yes, I'm Jay Delaney. I live at 141 Patricia Drive.
Thank you.
My questions are gonna probably be addressed to the town manager. The rules for the marijuana stations or places that we're gonna sell the marijuana. I wanna know through a board of ethics degree, I know that the board of selectmen every year take a test for their board of ethics and what they have, the rules they have to follow. Now, with these marijuana plants that are gonna go in our town, I wanna know if a board member or whatever has a friend, family, or whatever on that list, I am sure they have to excuse themselves. But my question to the town manager is, do they excuse themselves from all of the, all of the people that you are gonna vote for? Whether it's yes, no, or indifferent, I wanna make sure that the board of ethics with these marijuana places by the law. Because if we don't, down the road, somebody's gonna find out that he voted for this or they voted for that. And it's gonna put our town in a very, very serious situation. And I think you all know what I'm saying, but I wanna make sure that this thing is held to its due. If I might, you know, I don't speak so much, I'm up here. But the thing is, I just wanna make sure that the board of ethics and the agreements that we've all made with it are held to our, to our bill. And my question to the town manager is, if they have a friend or family that's applying for one of these places, they can't vote at all in that meeting, am I correct in saying that?
If you wanna, I know you're not the ethics.
Yeah, no, 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 so, so first of all, friend wouldn't count, okay? Because friends is not gonna count, but relative would count. And it would depend on the actual relationship that we'd, we'd have to check with. The Ethics Commission or the, if the, if a selectman fails, there could be a conflict of interest because of a relative. They should check with the Ethics Commission because, and then the Ethics Commission would give them a ruling. We've already asked town council about if there is any issues of ethics in relation to a board member, would they be, would have to accuse themselves from that particular license application or all of them? And we're still working our way through that. But like any ethics issue, whether it's this board or another board or a town employee, they should seek counsel from the Ethics Commission. Town council is not the lawyer for them and the ruling should come from the Ethics Commission. So we're gonna make sure that there's no issues in regard to potential ethics violations from any of the board members, whether it's here or on the planning board, because we, these applications do need site plan approval. But Mr. Delaney will make sure all that's taken care of before any hearings take place.
That's, I guess that's the answer I'm looking for. As long as it's gonna be true and it's not gonna come back on the town of Tewksbury as a problem or a lawsuit or whatever they might try to get at, as long as the vote is true with our selectmen and so forth, that's all I care. That's why I'm here tonight. I've heard a lot of different things about the marijuana things coming into play. But the one thing I didn't hear was how they were gonna handle it, how it was gonna be voted on. And I wanna make sure that everybody here that took that exam for the board of ethics holds true to that exam. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And I know you appreciate as a former elected official, how seriously we all take that responsibility.
When I was on the planning board, there was times that I had to stand up. And as a matter of fact, even leave the role.
So, so now I will just echo what the town manager said and I'll emphasize that the burden really is the burden really isn't on the town manager or town council to advise the board, the burden's on the individual board member to get the advice that he or she needs and the Ethics Commission is the place to go for that. So it is a very serious thing and I also wanna echo, it doesn't apply just to retail marijuana, it applies to every decision that board members up here make. And I believe that everyone has held themselves to the highest standards possible. And I am proud to serve with my current colleagues and many of my past colleagues. So hopefully that tradition of ethical decision-making will continue and I have no doubt it will. So to your point, residents need to rely on that, and that's important. So thank you for raising it and I can assure you, at least I personally and I believe my colleagues, I don't wanna speak for them, but they take that responsibility very seriously as well.
Mr. Chairman, to that point, I don't know about the rest of the board members, but I know personally, I've called the Ethics Department numerous times. It's a simple phone call. You know, just because of where I'm working, a state job or something like that, where I may be on something or way may happen, I don't wanna take that risk personally, financially or anything or put the town in a bad position. So it's a simple phone call to the Ethics Department saying, this is the scenario I'm in, there's a free attorney of the day, you tell them what there is, and my suggestion to all board members or anybody that's on any board in this town is if you bring something to them, they'll give you an answer over the phone, but also follow up and say, can you please send me a letter and then submit it to the clerk's office, saying this is what I found. This way you cover yourself. But, you know, just, there's been a couple of things, I'm sure probably each and every one of the board members has had something maybe come up, maybe a neighbor's house that we may be voting on or somebody that's a poll that's being put in front of somebody's house, there's numerous things that this could do, not only just the marijuana, but other things that may come up where you have to accuse yourself from that. So I, I'm sure everyone here is aware of that, it's an easy thing to do.
Yep, thank you. Okay. All right, so I wanna move on on our agenda. That brings us, I think, to item number four, which is the marijuana regulations. And before we open it up for discussion, I just wanna offer a couple of comments. First of all, we have draft regulations that have been presented to us. There have been some changes made, you all have the most recent copies of that draft. Regardless of the action that we take this evening, I wanna stress that the last paragraph of the draft, again, speaks to the future activity that this board will take, right? We're potentially adopting regulations to provide guidance to applicants around the process of decision-making. But this board will not schedule any public hearings on applications until, according to the last paragraph, the Attorney General of the Commonwealth has approved the general bylaw change and the zoning bylaw change that was recently approved at the special town meeting in October. So regardless of whether we adopt or don't adopt these regulations this evening, there will be no public hearings on citing or operating retail marijuana facilities until at least that time. And that doesn't mean that we're waiting at the starting line like at the track for the gun to be fired. When the AG approves those regulations, what that means is this board will then take effort to decide how they want to proceed. So that might take a little more time. So one of the things that has concerned me already is about expectation management and I do know that there are a number of parties, because we see the communication, interested in potentially opening a retail marijuana facility in Tewksbury. And that's great, 'cause one of the things that I've heard for many years is, we don't do enough to attract business and these aren't going businesses. So it's a good thing that we have interested parties. What's also important is that we manage the process effectively. And I'm only gonna speak for myself on the following comments. I'm not gonna speak for the board and I wanna be very clear about that, this is my personal opinion. But I've grown concerned about the level of activity and I want to take steps, at least through my words, to manage expectations. The regs and the adopted warrant article, a town meeting, allow for up to three of these facilities in Tewksbury. What's important to keep in mind that this is a brand-new process for this community. So my perspective is, this needs to be slow-walked. What I want to emphasize to interested parties, because there are numerous interested parties at this point, is that, again, it's not a road race. When and if we come to that point in time, I'm gonna be open-minded and I'm gonna listen to all of the presentations when we get to that stage. But I wanna be clear that this select board member isn't necessarily gonna approve three facilities right out of the gate. I may be inclined to support one because it's brand-new and I wanna see how it goes. I may be inclined to wait and take a wait-and-see approach. I might be inclined to approve two and maybe I'll be inclined to approve three. I don't know, but I do not want people who have a business interest to rely on the fact that they think we're gonna come here and I'm gonna vote necessarily for three. Everyone needs to do what they think is right for their business, I have to do what I think is right for the town of Tewksbury. So I just wanna put that on the table because I don't want, I've had conversations and phone calls from people saying, I'm gonna lease property and I'm gonna buy property and we have now communications of people arguing that this property's not a good place to go. And to be honest with you, it's totally irrelevant at this point in time, at least as far as I'm concerned. But those parties should understand that when it comes time to make those decisions, I'm gonna look at this very, very, very carefully. Because we have the benefit of having up to three facilities in Tewksbury, doesn't mean that we have to have three. And I need to look at what's proposed, how it's being cited, all of the criteria that are in the regulations around qualifications of proponents, and then I can make a decision. So I just wanna put that on the table. Again, I wanna stress that I'm not speaking for the board, I have four capable colleagues who may have differing opinions about this and I'm not asking them necessarily to comment on what I just said. But I felt out of an abundance of caution, I don't want people making business decisions on the assumption that things are gonna happen. They should make business decisions, in my humble opinion, on fact. So I feel compelled to say what I just did so they now have a little bit more information about how I might view this process going forward. So I'll pause there, I hope that's helpful, not more confusing. And I will open this up. Mr. Montori, do you have any comments about the regulations that you wanna offer?
Just quickly, so the board has a red-line version of the changes that we're proposing from the administration. And it's simply to clarify the process for applicants, outline some criteria that the board can follow when making decisions, it's not a weighted process, it's just things that the board can use in making their decisions. And from our standpoint, we think it adds clarity to the original draft of the regulations. And, you know, we'd like to get this, this document approved. If the board needs to make changes down the road, if something comes up, they can. But this will give applicants an opportunity to better understand the process and the regulations that the board will be following. Right now it's in limbo.
So we've had these draft regulations for some time, excuse me. Let me ask if my colleagues have questions or any comments around the draft and their revisions?
One question, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the town manager. I didn't get a copy. Is it a safe assumption that it is the same that was sent out in the digital packet?
Yes.
Okay. If there were no changes, then I have no questions. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Wellman?
Thank you. I agree with the point that you made earlier for myself. It's one of the reasons I asked that this item be included in section B, that's in blue, that says the select board has the authority to issue all, some, or none of the licenses authorized pursuant to the general laws. So I think that you are appropriate to put businesses on notice and let them know that. I agree with that. I also feel the same way. As we go through this process, we have not outlined how we're going to exactly vote or make those decisions. If we were to hear four companies at the same, on the same night, would we decide that night? Would we decide another night? Would we analyze that with a, you know, with a weighted average? I might think of the weighted average, you know, that kind of thing. So we haven't discussed any of those items. I don't know that we need to in order to process, move forward with this, 'cause I think the advisory to applicants is important and for the public to continue to give us feedback as we go. We can change this if we need to prior to, but I don't, I think it's substantive and quite complete.
Yeah, I, those are all good, very good points and I would, and I don't think you need to add those into, into the regulations, but I would recommend to the board that something this important, you shouldn't make a decision that night. And like, something as big as this should always be taken under advisement, the board should take, you know, a couple of weeks, a month, whatever they think is needed to finalize their decision and do whatever additional homework that needs to be made. But no decision the board makes needs to be made that night, you can always take things under advisement, but I would recommend that after each hearing, and you probably wanna do one a night or maybe two at most, 'cause four in one night, these are gonna be long hearings. Take your time doing them and take your time making the decision.
And I would just tag on to that, Ms. Wellman, and suggest that this board controls all of that. So there is a need for a discussion around it, but I don't think we necessarily have to commit something in writing as to the process, because the board has the ability and the authority, if you will, to say, we wanna table it or we're prepared to go forward, whatever that decision is. And that would have to be the consensus of the group.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you. And I wanna thank the manager and his staff for the work on this. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments around the regulations, the draft?
I do. Mr. Chairman, so I see the procedure, I have no problem. I know the guidelines are they have to go to the state, they have to get approval, then they have to come to us. It's a long process of coming through. I wasn't really in favor of hovering up to get this done because it's new to us. We're gonna learn as we're going on it, and honestly, in the last couple of weeks, we have made changes to this of suggestions, thoughts of what may and why we're doing it. One of the processes are that it's going to go through, be filed with the clerk, go the planning board, manager and select board. Have the planning board reviewed this and had their chances to make anything, because it's going to be going through, you know, the processes that, you know, if somebody comes through, they're gonna have to go through, I mean, most of these things are fought a select board. But is there anything that the planning board has had any thought of, because I mean, it's gonna be, they're gonna have to get site plan approval and get approval through the planning board, then come to us. Have they had any thoughts of process on this? So I believe the assistant town manager, Steve Sadler, originally spoke to the planning board and the board of health about the bylaw, obviously, and draft regulations. The changes that were made to the regulations really revolve around the board of selectmen's decision-making and application process. So we didn't go back to them for any comments. They're gonna have, you know, they're gonna have site plan approval as part of that, that's within the bylaw itself, not these regulations. So they'll have their own set of criteria to follow and decision-making process that they would normally go through. But we didn't, we didn't circulate this for their thoughts. This is subject to us to change in the future. I have no problem passing it, but I would like to, once it's passed, have it sent to the planning board and say, this is passed with, we can make changes to this. If you do have something that you'd like to make. We can do that. We can send it and if you have recommendations, we can bring it back to the board. I'm just, just to be, like I said, it's a brand-new policy, it's a brand-new type of business and I just like to, I would hate that all of a sudden we said, yeah, we had this and we wanted to have our say, but we didn't have an opportunity. That's a great idea. Just have them, I mean, they may not have anything, but at least give them the opportunity to say so. Mr. Chairman, if the board adopts the changes and the regulations tonight, we'll circulate it to both the board of health and the planning board and if they have any thoughts, they can let us know for future meetings.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? All right, if not, we're at the point where I need to ask if the board wants to move forward with adoption of the regulations, then I need a motion to do so.
I'd make that a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Kelly, seconded by Ms. Wellman, to adopt the regulations as amended by staff. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I will vote in the affirmative as well, so that will pass unanimously. We now have regulations. To your point, Mr. Montori, if you can make sure that they get posted in the appropriate places and circulated to the boards that are impacted, we can take it from there. And as I said at the outset, until the Attorney General speaks, we're gonna be in a holding pattern on any further activity on this subject. Okay, that will bring us to, let's see, we did invoices, so we have minutes to tend to and I know.
I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson.
Sorry? I'm sorry, sir, we gotta go back to our meeting and I'm, we're done.
I just have one question.
We're all done, sir. We're done with that topic. I apologize. We had a moment for residents.
Okay.
Thank you. Where was I? Okay, minutes. We have three draft minutes and we, the clerk at the time is not on the board any longer, so I'll offer review of the minutes. They're November 24, 2020, December 30, 2020, and March 11, 2021. Are there any questions or concerns about those draft minutes?
No.
No?
Mr. Chairman, move to adopt all three sets of minutes.
Okay, so we have a motion to adopt by Ms. Wellman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kelly on all three? Okay. May I ask all those in favor to please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and the chair's gonna abstain, 'cause I was not on the board for any of those three dates. So that would be a 4-0 vote with one abstention for the record. Okay, moving on yet again, we have board member reports, so let's mix it up. Mr. Mackey, you wanna offer comments for us tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one comment and keep it short. I know we've talked about it in the past at other meetings and it's been publicized, but the town's rate for electric, there's been lots of discussion around the cost for electric and rising prices. I actually had an individual reach out with some questions, they were able to get onto the program and it appears to be beneficial. So I would just reiterate the comments that members of this board have previously made to reach out if you have questions. Rates have risen significantly and the plan is that, or the intent is that they're going to continue to increase. So if you are not on the town's rate, I would recommend that you reach out and get information on that. Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few items. First, from the school building committee. So this is the second-to-last update before the kids move in in January. It's important, and my colleague, Mr. Champ, on the Planning Board said the same thing, and we've talked about emphasizing this to the public, that the project has continued through COVID, supply chain issues, and inflation, and has had fewer than 3% of project costs and changes. And it's going to open on time and on budget. So it's a combination of timing and excellent management and diligent oversight by the committee members throughout the project. And a number of people have cycled on and off that committee, former elected officials, and all to be commended along with the work of the individuals from our OPM and our architect design firm and construction firm, doing that work. The final completion date is December 12. I believe the school administrative staff is moving in this week, next week. The FFNE are all going in this week. And do you have anything to add, Mr. Montori?
No, it's getting ready to move. So we'll see how we do.
Yeah.
Move manager, we have a move manager working that's doing very well, helping us out. So the project came in under budget, and there were some punch list items, and last-minute issues that have come up in regard to pedestrian safety in the area, and student safety in the area, and overall, it went well.
It's really, it's really exciting to see it all come together again. NIMCOG had a housing production plan outreach meeting recently at the library, which was pretty sparsely attended. So that work is ongoing. I'm not sure that we're going to get the housing production plan in December. That may be delayed. At our NIMCOG meeting last week, the organization is eight months behind on work, because they've been understaffed for most of the year. So they've been diligent in getting more hiring in. And so they're picking up their pace right now. So we'll see. I don't think it's going to be delayed eight months, is not my point. But I don't think it'll be necessarily in December. But we have not got a definitive answer on that. They're also starting some new work on digital equity, which will be interesting to follow. And they're partnering with MAPC, which is really good to see NIMCOG doing that kind of partnering. The Winter Tree Walk is coming up at the Tewksbury Open Space Committee. There have been 20 organizations that have decorated trees at Rogers Park, the Trails at Chandler Wellfields, and Pinnacle Street Trails. So it's worth a walk, walk off some of the pie. I know I will be, because I love pie. And finally, I want to say congratulations to the girls' volleyball team who defeated Dennis Yarmouth for the Division III state championship title. And I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me go back to my left, Mr. Krappman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. LRTA is going through their, you know, the fiscal budget for the next year, talking about rates. One of the things that they're promoting is that they're giving free rides to the community through the month of December, that they were able to get some funding, and they're trying to promote the LRTA, using it, doing things, and they got some funding out of the state. And so it's free ridership that a lot of people are using, and they're promoting it through all the communities. They're also working with the councils on aging, talking about what they're doing. And each council on aging, so far, the community is submitting something to the LRTA, or how they're doing the Vance, what's going on. They've done what a number of the towns, we're going to be coming up in the next, you know, couple of months, or whatever it is, when our turn comes around. So we'll have, when that is received, I'll bring it to the board, so you can see what the production's being done out of that. But everything's going well with them. The North and Treyhand School is working to their final recommendations. They had a meeting last week. They'll be bringing something, hopefully, to our board in the month of December with recommendations. You know, the, the cost, it's going to be something that we're going to have to figure out. And when we did the elementary school building department, for some reason, there wasn't a, something in a line item in there to remove the schools. So it's going to be something that's going to be a recommendation to this board. But right now, the number is pretty high to, if the residents want to remove both of those schools, and then figure out what we want to do with them. But we're talking about, you know, four and a half to $5 million. That isn't a line item under any budget we have right now to remove those schools. And so we're going to have to figure that out. And the board will see what the, you know, what the recommendations are. We've got, we've had public meetings, we've had surveys, we've done everything we could possibly do to get recommendations from the town. They'll make recommendations to us. But honestly, when it comes down to it, a lot of it's going to have to do with the residents, what they want to pay for, because it's going to be a hefty fine fee of what we're going to be doing, when we're going to be cleaning these locations, and what the uses of what the residents want. Lastly, I want to talk about, I want to thank our Veterans Agent, Lisa Downey, who did a wonderful job on Veterans Day. Thank our chair for going and representing us at the ceremony. Nice ceremony, everybody was there. Town helped out well. Large turnout by our community, as usual, to honor our veterans. It was a wonderful ceremony. I know our veteran services through this town does wonderful things. We had the breakfast, they had a dinner at the Elks. They did numerous things that are going on, and all the, like I said, it takes a town to really come together, and all the different groups, the Knights, the Elks, the Lions, you know, the VFW. Everybody came together and helped out in one part or another to run something, to take care of our veterans in this town. So I was very proud of what they did. So just want to say thank you to Lisa and all her hard work. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Krappman.
Mr. Kelly?
I'm good, thank you.
Man of brevity this evening. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, just a couple of things from my end. It is kind of ironic, Ms. Wellman spoke so glowingly of the school that is being completed and we're about to open. I know that will be a source of great joy. It connects back to the tax hearing that we had, right? You can't get that without taxes, right? There has to be a contribution from the residents and the businesses that reside in Tewksbury to have something like that. So that's a very tangible example of why our tax bills do go up. We voted for that. And I just thought of that as you were talking about in such glowing terms, because it is going to be a jewel in our community. And most importantly, it was managed responsibly, under budget, on time, those benchmarks that we focus on. So I have two comments. One is just information from my colleagues. It's Mr. Montori's favorite time of year. No, not Thanksgiving. His employment agreement with this board requires us to do an annual evaluation. We typically try to do that in November or December. November is slipping away fast. So what I'd like to ask each of you to do is to put your thoughts together. We do have a form that some of the board members have used in the past. It's available if you need it. But what I'd like to do is ensure that we have this topic on the agenda for the sixth, and we will run through that. I believe this, the sixth will be a very comprehensive agenda. There's a number of items that we have to tend to. So I don't know if the board is willing to start the meeting a little earlier, maybe 6:30, if that's possible. But we do have a number of things to tend to.
You do have a second meeting in December, if you want to do it then, on the 20th.
Right before Christmas?
Doesn't matter. Yeah, doesn't matter to me. You could have done it tonight if you wanted, during the tax increase.
Do more at six and maybe cancel.
Yeah. So if you're, if you're all willing to start at 6:30, we can maybe tackle those things, if that's okay? And, Mr. Montori, I know we have some other things that may be involved, like the Planning Board and stuff, if I have my...
Yeah, I'm not sure what night that is. That might be the 20th, the joint meeting with the Planning Board on MBTA Communities. But on the sixth, we have the DPW coming in to present just a snow and ice plan for operations.
If you can just work with me on adjusting the agenda. If we have set items at seven, or 7:10, or whatever...
Yep, we can adjust.
We can put some things at 6:30 to move the meeting along a little bit. Okay, so I just want to give my colleagues some advance warning on that. It's, it's probably after the tax classification. It may be the next most important decision that we make every year. And then the other comment I have is I just want to express appreciation to the various police unions, the Benevolent Association, the Police Athletic League, and Superior Offices and Patrolmen's Union. They took to heart the issue of inflation and food insecurity. And collectively, they underwrote the distribution of a Thanksgiving meal to 100 residents in need in Tewksbury this past weekend through the Food Pantry. So as a member of the Food Pantry Board of Directors, but also wearing my hat here as a steward of our community, as an elected official, I want to thank them for their generosity in stepping up. That's a major league effort and contribution to support a lot of people who are less fortunate. So I wanted to publicly acknowledge that on behalf of the Food Pantry, and more importantly, those people who benefited. So that's, in summary, my comments. I believe we meet next on December 6. As I just stated, 6:30 will shoot for. And with that having been said, I'll ask if there's a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Mackey, seconded by Mr. Kelly. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will vote in the affirmative. We are now adjourned, and we wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving.